If we could call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Barb?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Ekoff?
Here.
Callis?
Lee?
Here.
Hauser?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Cranford?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Being the first meeting of the month, we should have a meeting of the Civic Center Authority with no meet, no business before the Civic Center Authority. We will close that meeting and move right into our regular meeting with the consent agenda.
Motion acceptance of the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Barb. Roll call, please.
Barb?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Ekoff?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, we're going to kick right off with information on the Underground Railroad. Liz, I see you've got us primed and ready.
Alrighty.
You've got excellent backup, so fire away.
I'm just the quick introduction here. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Twenty twenty-five. Wow. Anyway, so as you all know, we are a part of Looking for Lincoln, the Abraham Lincoln National Heritage Area here in Pontiac. I have the opportunity to sit on the steering council for the Looking for Lincoln group, and we are offered a lot of different opportunities. As you know, one of them being the most recent, the Albert Cashier exhibit, Wayfinding Exhibit that was placed at the Stravell House. We also had the opportunity to get some exhibits. They have traveling exhibits, and we hosted one two, two years ago at the public library. Kristen did a fantastic job with it. About six months ago or so, I was in a steering council meeting, and they were talking about a new exhibit that was going to be coming about. And when they emailed the stuff out to me, I thought, you know what? I'll just forward this to Kristen so she knows about it. And she immediately replied, I already have my application done. So you could tell she was pretty excited to get this, get this exhibit. So we are very lucky to be the third community that will be
Second outside of Springfield.
And the second outside of Springfield that will be hosting this. I'm going to let her talk a lot more about this because this is her project, but Kristen, here you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, Council. Happy New Year. As Liz said, we have the distinct honor of hosting one of the travel exhibits from the Illinois Heritage Area and Looking for Lincoln. This exhibit is amazing. That's about as brief as I can make that. But the Journey to Freedom, Illinois Underground Freedom, or Underground Railroad exhibit details the work and risks and challenges of freedom seekers in Illinois' history and the conductors that worked with them to bring them freedom and dignity. And this exhibit has been painstakingly put together by Heather Fieser, who's a program manager for Looking for Lincoln, over the course of a couple of years. And it is just so well done. I'm excited that Pontiac will have the opportunity to host this and that we are able to bring this experience to the community. With this exhibit, we will have four companion programs that are equally as amazing. And there are printouts of the flyers in your packet. The first will be, there's actually not a flyer for it, but there will be an opening reception on the thirtieth of January, which is the very first opportunity to see the exhibit. It is being installed that day at the library. And program manager Heather Fieser will briefly present on the work that she has done to bring this exhibit to life and all of the various parties that have aided in making this exquisite exhibit. So if you would like to be one of the first to come out and see it, I certainly welcome you that evening. But the first historical program that we will have after that opening reception will be on February fourth, and we will welcome Historic Voices Laura Keys as Lucy Pettingill. Lucy Pettingill was a station operator on the Underground Railroad and a Peoria resident in eighteen, in the eighteen hundreds. And she will detail Lucy's time working with abolitionists in the abolitionist movement as the freedom seekers worked in western Illinois. And it's a very, very unique and one-of-a-kind program. She comes in full costume, full historic attire, and will detail the life and work of Lucy Pettingill. That is again February fourth at 5:30. The second program is with local historian Dale Meili. Obviously, you know of the work that Dale has done with the Stravell House here locally, but he has written a number of books and articles, and one of them is on the Underground Railroad. And he will detail the history of the Underground Railroad, specifically in Livingston County. There was a route from just west of Fairberry to Ottawa, and he has lots of historical information to provide the community on that. And that is Tuesday, February eleventh at 5:30. And then we will wrap up our month-long exhibit with a very special musical program on the twenty-second of February. This will be both a meet-and-greet opportunity and a musical concert with folk musician and folklorist Chris Villalillo. He will have a meet-and-greet at the library at one o'clock on the twenty-second, followed by a concert at 3:00 P.M. So as you can see, this is kind of a very busy month and a very special month of February with lots of wonderful opportunities for the community in the surrounding area. The initial flyer that was printed for you in your packets does have a website at the bottom of it for the exhibit if you want to get a little more information about the exhibit ahead of January thirtieth, when it is first installed. You can go to that website. There's lots of wonderful information there, videos for anyone following along at home and educators that you may know. There's also a full curriculum guide, and we will be partnering with area schools to be able to take full advantage of that information if they wish. But I encourage you to go out to that website, take a look at this exhibit, and more importantly, I welcome you and all of the community to the library in the month of February. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristen. You've got a big, big agenda for this month, so yeah. Anything else to add, Liz, or you?
No, unless anyone had any questions about anything. The programming was offered as part of us being a part of the Looking for Lincoln National Heritage Area, which we think is a pretty special, special thing as well. So, yeah.
This is an interesting subject because about twenty years ago, I had the opportunity to hear Mrs. Boswell, daughter-in-law of Hubert Boswell. Everybody should know Hubert Boswell. But it was a very intricate situation, organization, and obviously it worked well.
It'll be a great exhibit.
Sure it will.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We get dull now. We get Jim.
Justice for Justice for What a great introduction. This is what you have before you is the facade grant improvement program for the year. This, nothing really majorly changed. I just changed some of the wording in the design. I made sure it included that the infrastructure committee was the reviewing committee and that what we kind of implemented last year, that after the six months expires, if they haven't used their grant, that we can roll it to someone else so the funds don't just sit till the next budget year at the approval of the committee. So proposing again that last year was $150,000 was budgeted to the facade grants, and we use the bulk majority of that. So I think that's still should be a good number this year.
You don't think inflation's going to hurt that number at all?
What's that?
You don't think inflation will hurt that number at all?
I, you know, I
In the coming years?
I, I mean, I think somebody probably could argue that, but I
It's still a substantial partnership for us.
Oh, yeah.
It keeps us in the ballpark no matter what we go. So there could be a rare circumstance we'll have to look at individually.
Yep. And with the approval, then we will put out the information and start collecting applications to have reviewed prior to April one.
Basically, it's the same program, a little wording change, so we just need to get a motion to keep the program in effect.
Nobody has any more
Motion by Jerry, was it?
Sure.
I heard Jerry first.
Jerry, and then seconded by Frank. Roll call, please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Ekoff?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Super. Thank you. Utility billing, online payments.
This is just an update on where that stands. We have had meetings over the last couple weeks. We've done testing. Everything seems to be working out fine on all those testings. And with our current billing software, all of the APIs and software interfaces are in place. So if things go well, this should go live on Wednesday. And if they don't, if it doesn't go well, it'll go live shortly thereafter. But it'll probably just have a soft launch on Wednesday, and we'll, we'll make sure that everything's working. We did, we had what they call a dummy site where they actually took our information, put it into a system. We were making payments, reversing payments, using the automated phone system. Everything was working out fine. So the plan is then, when it goes live on the front page of the website, there should be a link right away to Pay My Utility Bill. And also in, if you're thinking of our website, there's an I Want To, and then the next page is Pay My Utility, and it will take you right to the interface of Invoice Cloud to make that electronic payment. You can, the, the customer can do it as a guest, or they can sign up. And when you sign up, there's a few more features that you get, such as you can get into paperless billing, text, you can pay by text. The system, their system, it's Invoice Cloud, not us, but their system will, can, can remember how you paid, so you can either do auto pays, or it will say, do you want to pay the same as you did last time? And you can choose that method as well. So everything looks to be going pretty well on that. So hopefully Wednesday, you'll see a new link on the website.
So as, I mean, I think our front desk is pretty busy with people taking payments after sewer bills come out.
Yep.
Are we going to provide them with a helpful tip to get to use that moving forward? So that, I mean, I know people are still going to come in.
Yep.
But if we, if we educate them in person, they might
Absolutely. So we plan to place upfront a, like a kiosk, but a station where people can do, can come in, and they can do it themselves, too.
Okay.
And as well as if they need any assistance, that our staff, they've all been trained on the system. So it does a couple important things for us that are, make us PCI compliant with handling people's data. And that is, the customer then is in charge of their own credit card all the time. We're not taking numbers. We're not doing any of that anymore. So, for example, if you called on the phone and said, hey, I want to pay by credit card, we would say, yeah, we have to transfer you to this voice system. The voice system, while it sounds, you know, everybody's like, oh, gosh, a voice system. It's pretty easy. It starts off first asking if you want English or Spanish, and then it'll say, enter your account number. So if you'd use the voice system, you need to know your account number. You put it in, and then it'll say your balance is X. Do you want to pay that? Yes. How do you want to pay? And then you put in your information in there, and it'll take it. So it was, it's pretty seamless. Like, we were able to do a phone payment in thirty seconds. It was, it was pretty easy.
Does it save your information?
What's that?
Does it save your credit card or
So the phone system, I, I don't, I don't think the phone system will. So
It probably can't.
Yeah. So their, their, I guess their server, when you sign in as an account holder, you know, you, since you're signing in, it, all your information's stored behind your own password and then Invoice Cloud's protection. So that way, we, we then no longer have to do PCI scans of our information, and Andrew doesn't have to do these updates for our stuff because we're no longer handling anybody's credit card information. It'll all be done. So then the next phase of that is for, for customers who are using, using credit cards to pay like permits and, you know, just different city hall things, like a towing fee, that there's also a system there because we're using their credit card portal, and they have what they call an Invoice Cloud store. We'll enter it into our cash receiving system, so it'll be in our system. And then the invoice, Invoice Cloud store, they'll be able to make that payment, swipe the card, and it'll be all, all taken care of. So
If we already have it debited from, do we need
So if you, no, if you're, if, if you already have it automatically debited, nothing changes for you. And as a matter of fact, that's one other thing, and we'll have more information coming out. But Invoice Cloud has an ACH option. I think we've talked about this before, but they charge a fee for theirs. Locusts, our, our billing software, has an ACH option that's free. And so if you're going to do ACH, then you sign up for the ours, and we'll have a link that, that'll be out there for our ACH, and there's no fee for that one.
We don't have to do anything
But if you're already on it, there's nothing, nothing to change.
After it gets implemented, there'll be a lot more questions that'll come up to you. So now you know what to say. But it certainly will streamline the operation at the front desk. That's the hope anyhow. Okay. Moving on, public properties. Mike, you want to give a report?
Public Properties and Utilities Committee meeting was on December seventeenth. I called it to order at five o'clock that evening. City Administrator took role, and the following members were present. Bradshaw, Jovanini, Callis, and Cranford. Also present was Mayor Alvey, Kelly Ekoff, Parks Director Beckman, Golf Course Manager Shannon Campbell, and City Administrator Wolford acted as secretary. On the agenda, we had a data review of the Oaks Marketing and Golf Course activity. Mr. Campbell discussed radio marketing, hole sponsorships, PTHS calendars, punch cards, and junior clinics. There was some discussion on scorecards and voucher effectiveness, outing vouchers for return play and social media usage. We then looked at the proposed Oak Course pricing and strategies. We discussed daily fees for weekdays, noon adjustments being extended further, weekend and holiday rates. There's some discussion on league golf rates, advertising the Pontiac Special. Some daily rates needed adjusting, such as weekend, noon to five, being the same as the morning rates. Mr. Campbell will be making revisions, and I'm assuming presenting that this evening. Competitive analysis that we had was a discussion around our rates with other area courses, showing some unique differences between the Oaks and other area courses, some being nine holes only and some being private clubs. Then we adjourned. And I'd just like to add one other piece here, and this, how impressed I was with the competitive analysis and, most importantly, the financials that were given. Initially, when we did this years ago, I was hesitant with my vote on the acquisition of the golf course, of the Oaks. I needed to be assured that the Oaks acquisition was not going to become a burden to the taxpayers of Pontiac. Most importantly, I needed to know the Oaks would cover its own debt, operations, costs, and strive to make an early profit. I'm not a golfer. I've mentioned that many times, but I took great interest in helping with that goal. And I and several others on, on the council worked with a consultancy to help arrive at a branding and marketing plan. So it's heartening to know that under the daily efforts of, of Shannon Campbell, and now under the watchful eye of Gary Beckman, that the Oaks has had several rewarding years. And the citizens of Pontiac should see this as a great achievement. The Oaks is fulfilling its promise and reaching the goals set by the council. And, and pun intended, I know now that we have a rainy day fund of substantial amount. So back to you.
Thank you. Very good. Well said. That does come up occasionally, us buying the golf course.
Yes.
Let's move on, though, and get to the golf course, the Oaks. Gary or Shannon?
Shannon.
Okay. Hey, no spikes. Okay, good deal.
Good evening, everyone. Mike talked a lot about what I'm up here to talk about, but I'm here to ask for approval for the increases that we've discussed at the December seventeenth meeting. It was actually my first committee meeting that I've ever been to since I started in twenty-one, and it was a very productive meeting, I felt, which, like I said, Mike explained a lot of that earlier. But as far as pass holder rates, as a group, we kind of decided, last time I was here, I presented that. We didn't really do much change as far as that goes. We were kind of more focused on the daily fees and worked kind of together to finalize that pricing. So there wasn't anything drastically changed, but like Mike had said, we're going to take that weekday rate and increase the post-five P.M. from, increase that $5 up to $35, Monday through Thursday. And as for weekends, we decided to keep the same rates on weekends from seven to five rather than seven to noon. It's going to be that same $45 rate from seven in the morning until 5:00 P.M. So the only price break on the weekend will come post-5:00 P.M. Some of the other things we discussed in the meeting were increasing the Pontiac Special by $5. We figure with the increase in our daily fees last year, we should probably adjust that as well. And then the other thing that we haven't really adjusted since the city took over was the cost of a round of golf for a league player. So a non-member since twenty-one has only paid $16 for nine holes in a cart. And after last year's increase to the nine holes, we decided to take that from sixteen to twenty, since these guys are locked in for a certain amount of weeks. So kind of did that as well. And we, like, like you said, we also had some really great discussions on marketing and kind of what we've done in the past and kind of suggestions on what we should do going forward, including as simple as having some of my staff, whether they're on the course playing and off duty, or at the course, making posts, whether that's on Twitter, or Snapchat, or Facebook, or whatever social media avenues they're taking, just to kind of keep us, you know, in front of everybody's eyes. One of the other things we're going to push is so that everybody in the area, as far as the city limits goes, knows Pontiac the area, as far as the city limits goes, knows Pontiac Special, what days that it's on, what the rate is and that, and everything that comes with that, as well as promoting lessons going into 2025, to get just more both junior golf and adults out there giving lessons. So I feel confident with those price changes and an improved marketing plan for 2025. I, I can foresee us possibly having a as good or a better year in '25 than we did in '24. And I thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Under pass options?
Mm-hmm.
Just range. Is that, is that driving range?
That's driving range, yep.
Okay. So what is the cost if I just go out?
So right now, it's $6 for a small bucket and $10 for a large.
Okay. Fair enough.
Well, Shannon and the entire crew out there have done a great job of keeping things well maintained. I think our systems are operating at very efficiently. Anything on watering system that we need to be concerned with?
No. I think I said last time, Devins moved on to an assistant position, but he left us in a really good spot. We don't have a central computer. He actually created me one off of a spreadsheet. So I can utilize that for, to maximize and put as less, least amount of pressure on that system as I possibly can and still have it meet adequate needs for what we need for the golf course.
And you did have play in December this year.
That we did. I'm guessing, I'm guessing we'll probably have some at the end of January and more so probably at the end of February.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions?
You getting a big response off of the sewer bill option?
I'm, what's that?
Are you getting a big response off the sewer bill option?
Yeah. Yeah. I would say that's probably one of the most beneficial things we have because people, it, it, it just allows everybody to be able to get involved and do it and not have to fork over that entire front. Probably helps us sell a few more golf cart passes as well, just as they can throw that on there and space it out a little more.
Some of us don't run as well as we used to, Jerry. So we need a motion to approve-
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Scott, seconded by Jason. Roll call, please.
Thanks, guys.
Ekoff?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're moving on to another hot topic, budget.
So this is an easy one. This is just information that I'm looking to have the budget workshops with the council and with all the department heads toward the end of this month into the first week of next month. If you can take a look at your calendars and clear out a few days, and we'll, we'll get the departments all scheduled to come through a committee of the whole. And then in the meantime, from now until then, I'll be working with all the department heads to put those together. I will send out more information to everyone, and we'll make sure that we have some appropriate dates and then get them published. Because if, if anybody knows for sure that they're gonna be gone or can't make a date, just let FON know.
Okay. Typically, these are lengthy sessions, so keep that in mind. I'll try to make them as concise as possible, but-
The nice thing is we already have the infrastructure program done, so that, that will be useful.
Okay. Okay. Well, no action there. We jump right into Mayor's comments. My first comment would be, if you didn't go, you missed a great holiday tournament. It was well, well attended. The honoring of the '74 Pontiac High School championship team was done really well. I, I can remember, after that team won, I was working at the newspaper, and we printed a special victory edition. Only one of the players that was in that group had it with them. So, you know, but it was quite a deal 50 years ago and still is today. The other thing is, there was a retail meeting today at the Eagle Theater that was well attended. And Liz and Misty and Jim and others made some inroads into next year's planning and moving us forward into Centennial Plaza and Streetscape and so on. Other than that, we also have need of executive session after this. So I will ask the council for any comments.
I have one or two, I guess. These kind of go hand in hand. But you'll note in the staff update, there's a, a comment about the train depot windows being cleaned. And I just want to speak on that subject. I took the train to Chicago about six weeks ago. And while we were waiting for the train, I noticed the embarrassing condition of the depot and the windows. I took pictures. There was months' worth of dirt attached to them and graffiti written in them. And it was really kind of not a look that we want to impress upon people who are coming to our city, frankly. And so I, I came home and right away fired off an email to Jim and Chris, and they got right on it. And people went over there. Perhaps we should investigate. There's a gentleman in town who cleans windows. He'll come out and do it every six months for us without anybody even having to go. Because I know-
We have that scheduled to be, to be done.
Okay, great. But I guess the point I really want to make is, the impressions that we make on people about the property that we own is really important. And this building is not the look that we want anybody coming to our community that might be wanting to open a business or anything. I mean, the, the shingles are horrible. The siding is coming off. We need to make it a focus of our budget next year. It's, it's really, I mean, it, it should be important to us that we want this building to be our face. It is. It's where we conduct our business. And that's all. I'm just talking about impressions.
Well, building maintenance, of course, is always important. And as we've, over the years, you know, as well, that, you know, several efforts have been made to do different things. Some of them were just stopgap.
Well, we just kicked the can down the road. It's, I mean, I know we've talked about it before. It's just that we always find something that's more important. And-
I think this coming year, we'll see a big improvement with the outside.
The parking lot is gonna be huge.
Yeah. So once that's done, then phase two, we'll keep moving forward. Any other comments, council? Frank?
The steel for the bus cover is about ready to go off for a quote to, to the warehouse. And then after that point, we'll send it out to be detailed. After we get the details back, we can send them off to, is it PDAV?
PGAV.
PG, yeah.
For their stamp. And then, so we get that into the end building.
Again.
If we're ready.
Yeah. Well, part of the Centennial Plaza, which we've put a lot of money budgeted for, so. Okay. City Administrator?
Just a couple. Just as a reminder, the Albert Cashmere exhibit is installed out at the Stravell House. So definitely take a, take a look at that. And from over the holidays, you know, I just want to give a, a thanks to Community Enrichment with Santa's House being moved to Block 59. It was an absolutely beautiful display that we had down there. And kudos to the Main Street Program and Misty and, and everyone who's helped with that. And then this, you know, this year, as we've been working, an important note that I just like, I think is important to put out there is, we have been working in, on efficiencies. And one of the nice things that Greg Knowles has been doing in zoning is we've condensed all of our different permit applications to one. So we have a few more things that we'd like to, we'll be coming forth with on some changes there. But now one application will get you any building permit you need, whether it's a fence, a pool, any of those things. And so we're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to get work done, to come here, to start a business, and have one place to go, one form to fill out.
Convenience, we're all in favor of convenience. Yeah. Good. Does that cover you?
That's it.
Okay. Public comments?
I have a comment this time.
Oh, good. Step up, step up to the podium, please.
I have notes. Because I tend to ramble when I'm nervous. And you'll make me nervous. So I have some notes.
Can I have your name, please?
Anna Horner.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Evening, council. So I am spearheading the efforts to revitalize Last Night. It used to be called First Night, but it's copyrighted. So it's now Last Night. And I just wanted to kind of review our last quarter of fundraising that we had and then kind of preview what we've got going on for this year. Because Last Night is happening at the end of this year, going into 2026. So fourth quarter fundraising last year was really, really great. We had some really great sponsors. I have the, the Jingle Jog hat that the general store donated the embroidery on it for us. And we got a lot of good feedback on that. They're really cute. We have some improvements that we're going to do for our fundraising events that we had, like Breakfast with Santa. And we had gift wrapping that happened downtown. And the Jingle Jog were our three big fundraisers that we had this last quarter. So the Jingle Jog was super successful. We had 41 registrants. Some of them were from out of state. And we sent out, Misty sent out feedback forms to all of the registrants, and we were slowly getting some of those back. And we've got some great feedback for those. The biggest one that we've seen so far is safety. We had a couple really close calls with people almost getting hit while they were running. So I have some improvements on those things for this year. So for 2025, we have a lot of good things that are planned. Our first event is at the end of this month in the Eagle Theater. On the 25th, we're doing Pontiac Scott Talent. And Mr. Wolford is going to be a judge. Right? You remember?
Have you remembered?
Yeah, you do. He's going to be a judge. Marlon Iels is going to be a judge. And Tara Graves is also going to be a judge for that. So that's gonna be really exciting. It's a free admission. We're charging for acts to enter. So it's 15 bucks to enter as an act. And then we're doing concessions as well. And all of that will go towards Last Night. And then we've got some stuff in the fall. So like, we're going to do a Halloween Pet Parade that we're going to piggyback on the trick or treating that's gonna happen downtown. And I asked Mr. Wolford today at the retailers meeting if I could do a golf cart scavenger hunt. And he said yes. So, so that's my okay for that. That should be a lot of fun and really exciting, something fun to do in May. And then, yeah, so I'm, finally, I'm excited to say that it's finally going to happen this year. I had a lot of people saying it was, you know, last year, 2024, going into 2025. It's like, no, 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 no. I'd be insane to try and do that in like, two months. So it's exciting to say it's gonna happen this year. And I'm really looking forward to getting it done and having this event for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the update. We appreciate it. Sounds like you got some great volunteers.
Yes.
Okay. Which is always important. Like I said, we do have need for executive session. So without further ado, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
No motion?
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Scott. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Ekoff?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Give us about three or four minutes and-